Here.
Stephanie, here. Nate.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
So you're gonna call me.
Okay.
You didn't call me in order, huh?
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, contend agenda. Mr. Kudus, approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes on August 12th, and approval of listing bills. Any additions, corrections?
No. Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Travis?
Second.
Nate?
Well, we needed a second, so now I also do.
Okay, I got that.
Nate, or, uh, aye, aye.
Aye, okay.
Got me all messed up.
My mind's not real good, anyway. Stephanie? John?
Hi.
Doug? Okay, this time, public input. If it's not on the agenda, if you wish to talk to the council, you can do so. Come on in. Just give your name, your name and...
My name's Jay Delancy. I live at 509 Scobie Road, Mount Vernon, Iowa, northwest side. I'm a veteran, Navy Vet, six years, age 591. Some of you might know me. I started scrapping recycling, I'm supposed to say, I think, nine years ago. So then I got involved with Missy Hauser down at the Washington Elementary, creating meals for kids and families at Christmas time. But that's pretty much been taken off and people have adopted. Well, we started the Sons of the American Legion a little over three years ago, I believe it is. And we started a recycling program. We were getting involved with Southeast Lynn over here, KCAP, and a few other things. We were giving money. Unfortunately, the leader and the guy that takes care of the money, neither one could make it tonight, but Jeff showed up as a backup for me. But what I'm requesting or asking, I talked to Rick Scott, your chief police, about this. I'm being turned in for the 11th time as a nuisance neighbor to my neighbor from the west. And he is now threatening, I guess, the city of Mount Vernon. If they don't make me stop this, he's gonna sue them. So I had a meeting Friday with Chris, the assistant, what do you call it, to the city, the police chief, and we've all decided that I guess I'm just gonna have to fold the program up because there's nowhere else. We've been brainstorming with everybody. So Scott asked me to come in front of you guys, possibility there's somewhere that we could do this here in Lisbon, Iowa, because we have been getting a lot of recycled scraps from you folks, too. And I'd kinda like to change it, though, where we only do it a few times during the year. We'll pick up during the warm months, of course. And you kinda have the Legion of Veterans guys involved in it and use it as fundraising. And I kinda wanna just help them get set up and get them set up with the recycle centers like Marion Iron, CC Recycling, and Cedar Rapids. And then I would like to kinda get away from it because I've been doing it for such a long time and I'm tired of all these things.
So how much area do you need?
Uh, we really don't know how big. The problem is with scrapping, you really need to sort it to get the good money. So, I mean, where I live, I'm on two acres. We're probably using, what do you think, 100 by 20 square foot, about? Something like that, close to that area. And I've spent tons of money bringing in rock, made it into basically a parking lot. I eliminated one of the tubs a year ago because of the complaint as being a nuisance. So we just got down to where there's shred body of cars and metal and toaster ovens and pots and pans. But people don't realize there's seven different types of aluminum. There's like two to three different types of copper. There is three different types of brass. So, you know, if you can do it the right way, you can get more bang for your buck, you know, and make the money. So that's kinda what I'm just putting this forward to you guys. I don't, you know, we could think about this for a few months. I'm pretty much shutting it down.
Where you at, at Scobie Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, uh, I kinda agreed out with Chris and the chief there at Mount Vernon. And, uh, but I have, oh, wow, to clean it up if I like. But I told him I'd try and get on it a lot more hardcore, get it wholly, majority of it cleaned up by before winter, if we're lucky, and winter doesn't come that fast.
Yeah.
So that's kinda what I'm doing out. I'm trying to save the program. It does make money. I think we've raised, what have we raised, five to $6,000 over the four years?
I think it's more than seven.
Seven, sir. Like I said, we're not money bad.
Sure.
So it does work. And Mike, our leader, had how much tonnage on all the receipts that we've kept out of the Lynn County landfill to and from being buried into the planet. So, but unfortunately, he's not here. He's at a night in Columbus Chamber meeting, too, so he can't be here.
We'll look around and now that we know, you know.
You can get ahold of me or Ed Schultz, who has that thing in one of your guys' thing about it. But yeah, if you could help us out or if we could teach somebody here how to do it and keep it going and use it to help Southeast Lynn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
If I might.
Okay.
My name's Jeff Martin. I'm Mike. My name's Jeff Martin. I live over in Mount Vernon, 101 Third Avenue, Northwest, just on the sledding. Probably be all familiar with that. Some of you might have been over there on occasion. Probably not lately. I just wanted to say that it's, you know, it's, the only money that's come out of this, uh, money that's made from the scrap goes into maintenance on the car or the truck we're using and some gas money. Uh, the rest of it goes to, um, to the charity support. Uh, well, I'm not a member of the Sons of the American Legion. I'm just a volunteer. And I, you know, it's, uh, we've taken a lot of stuff out of the neighborhoods of Lisbon and Mount Vernon. And most of the time, we pick it up for free. You get heavy appliances and stuff and there's a, you know, there's a $20 charge or something. I'm not sure what it is because I was just volunteering. Anyway, so I think, um, it does a lot to clean up the town and to make it easier on residents to get their other things in the backyard that they just haven't got around to or aren't able to take it down to the scrap, you know, once a year on cleanup, uh, locations. They can't physically load it into the car. But anyway, um, so that's, you know, I'm just talking in support of that. I think it's a, it's a good program. It's, uh, I do it mainly because I love to get exercise, get a little bit of exercise, lift a few heavy things once in a while. Makes me feel like I'm not almost seven years old. So anyway, uh, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um, public input. Oh, we already did that one, didn't we? We just got done with that. Okay, under miscellaneous, approval of historical preservation to proceed with applying for grants in performance and evaluation on the barns at the nature center, the history building, and library.
There are some grant opportunities out there that would help us pay for a professional to come and do an evaluation on the, um, west wall of the history center, on the barns from the nature park that we just purchased. And also, um, we've already started on the library, but we would like them to take a look at that also, just to make sure the repairs that we're doing meet with the historical value of the building. So, um, historical preservation met and decided they wanted, I talked with them about taking on this, this project to help me with it. They met and decided they would like to take on this project and proceed with applying for those grants, and they just wanted your approval to do that.
I move to approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Okay. Approval of annual urban renewal project, a report for fiscal year 19, 2000.
This is the report that I'm required to do every year that tells the state where we use our TIF funds. I've prepared the report and it's ready to be submitted, but it has to go, it has to have your approval.
Okay, we need your motion to approve then.
Move to approve, second.
Your motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Review of capital improvement project. Nope, that's not right. Yeah, that is.
That's right.
I can't see a thing. Uh, review of capital improvement projects and discussion regarding future projects.
Um, back when I first started back at the city, um, in 2015, we had a capital improvement project book and it was due to expire in '15, so we started a new one. This one, I had to go from '15 through '20. I'm happy to report that we have completed almost everything in this book. Um, the one thing we're still working on is the water project, which we're gonna be moving forward on that. One of the other items that we did not do was painting the water tower, which was kinda passed on from the last time. And then the other one was the, you guys had started a street project, I don't know if it was 2011, was South Street, and it was to continue and, um, down to Eevee Street and back to where Maine is. That part was not finished. Uh, we did use those funds for the UV disinfectant at the sewer plant instead. So those are the only projects that we hadn't really completed in there. So it's time for us to start looking into a, a new capital improvement, um, plan. So I'm just looking right now for guidance on any future projects that you guys want to take on. Uh, we don't have to make that decision tonight. I just wanna start on this process and get it moving. Um, so I'll be writing down some that Travis and I, I'll meet with Travis and talk to him, uh, meet with the fire department, um, the police department. Um, we, we have, um, done the new dump truck. We've done, um, the fire truck. We've done, um, a new police vehicle, so we've fulfilled those needs. But we're looking into the future so we can get another five-year plan. So I'm just asking right now for you guys to start thinking about that and, um, call me, email me, give me any information or any input that you would like to add to this book.
When we, um, did that last time, did we do it like in a committee? Or we just all sat around?
We did, um, we did, we did do a goal setting.
Yeah.
Session. And then I also gave you guys all of the, um, projects that we had and had you rate them according to which ones you thought were more important. So we did do it in several different meetings.
But the original was not done. It was, we had people from the community here, you know, that gave all the...
Was that a comprehensive plan or was that the capital improvement plan?
Well, it's comprehensive plan.
Probably the comprehensive plan when you had...
Yeah, but the capital improvement is part of that comprehensive plan.
Yeah, this is pretty much just projects, so. But we can do it either way.
Also, you wanted to give your projects. I can do a lot.
City projects and equipment is usually what we put in this, the capital improvement plan.
So will this include like the park or no? Like the complex?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we have planning and zoning as part of that?
Um, not usually this. They do future land use and comprehensive plan. They're part of that.
Okay. So you just want ideas then, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Oh, well, here. Discussion on future annex plans.
I, um, put this on here. We've talked about annexation in the past, but not really into a lot of detail. Um, with the bypass coming, I know it's been a concern of a lot of people, um, of when we're gonna annex and what areas we would need to annex. I have met with, um, Chris Nosbish a couple times regarding this, um, because we wanted to try to work together with Mount Vernon just to see what their plan was. We have pretty much decided at this point where, um, the dividing line would probably be between the two cities as far as where they would wanna annex and where we would wanna annex. And we've, um, trying to come up with an agreement and put that in writing that he will be presenting to his council and we, I will be presenting to you guys. We've had the discussions, but Chris hasn't had time to do that yet. He's got his, he's knee-deep in the new wellness center, he said, so it's, um, it'll, it'll be a little bit more time before he gets to it. But once we do that, then I'll, we will bring it to both councils for your input. And, um, neither town, right at this point, is moving forward on annexation mainly because, um, we've come to an agreement where we're not gonna push over on their side. They're not gonna push over on our side. So I did send you guys all out or put in your packets a memo that Chris had given to Mount Vernon's council, which helped explain what we discussed and some of that stuff. So if you have any questions, call me. If you wanna give me any input, you know, send me an email, call me, or whatever. But as soon as Chris and I get that agreement written up or draft agreement written up, then it will be presented to you and we can change it. We can modify it or whatever we need to do. And they have that option, too. But it's just a, a draft beginning that Chris and I came up with.
Okay, so...
The agree, the agreement itself is just for boundary land, correct?
Pretty much.
Okay. Doesn't have anything to do with either one of the on-ramps or off-ramps in, in Mount Vernon or Lisbon, right?
No.
Just the boundary land?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. Did you have a question, bro?
Uh, nevermind.
So, I mean, I mean, what do we do when these farmers ain't gonna sell? I mean, we're pretty much landlocked. I mean, we...
Um, we can force, um, annexation, but it, it's just, I mean, there's really not a reason to do it unless you have a big development or something that's coming in. Because there are rules and regulations that require you to put infrastructure in there after a certain time period, once you annex that property in. So you've got to have some funds to back you before you start doing that. So if we have an area that we presume will have some growth, you know, soon, then yeah, we could consider annexation and, and, you know, we'd have to have funds available. I think it's like three years is when most of the time they require you to, to start putting the structure in.
Do we have water to, well, we gotta have water to where Seagway Church is, right? But we don't have sewer out there. Sewer ends Dollar General-ish?
Dollar General actually goes to Grand Avenue Circle.
So we had to come over to that.
I thought they did have sewer out at the church.
They're still outside city limits.
Yeah, but I thought that...
We had to give them water and a sewer.
I thought we did, I'll check on that. But I thought we did sewer out that far, too.
Well, they, they were going to come in as part of the city and then they changed their mind. That's my recollection.
I'll double-check on that.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, you know, if we're gonna talk about annexation, I mean, we're gonna do some because these farmers, the farmers ain't gonna sell. I mean, that's plain and simple. I mean...
I have talked with, with some. Some of them showed a little interest and, um, some of them didn't. But it's just, it kind of all depends. Some of them think if they're annexed in, their taxes and stuff are gonna change drastically. But after talking with the county and, um, it's, it's, there's not that big of a difference. But I have, I have spoke to a few of them. But as far as...
We have quite a bit of land within the city limits that has sewer and water to the boundary line. You know, I mean, we need to really think about that. And I mean, north and now by, you know, Novox and all that and out in that area. If that's what we're after.
You got water and sewer and everything on the city.
Yeah.
On the boundaries.
Yep, so.
Anyway, hopefully...
I'll keep you informed on that and it will, it will be coming back to you.
Okay.
Well, my biggest thing is I just would hate for us to miss out on an opportunity. Waiting too long and, you know, Mount Vernon won't hesitate. Once they find out they can make some money out there, they won't hesitate. And, you know, with Highway 1 and 30 right there, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage.
Yeah.
But if we get there first, you know, you know.
You gotta have somebody that wants to move out to an area first. You know, I, it's my understanding, a lot of places that they're gonna open a gas station or something. They want to be part of the city. They want to have that fire protection, that water on site.
Mm-hmm.
It's a requirement of them moving ahead. They're used to be. I mean, the only bad thing, Travis, you know, you're talking about at the, by where on-ramp or off-ramp is, it's a big valley. It's a huge valley. You know, Mount Vernon is flat.
Yeah. That's true.
Fairly close.
But it's not that big of a valley. I know there's a lot of land around there that, you know, they can move and, and make it any way they want to.
Yeah, right.
I don't think that that's as big of an issue as, you know, that kinda, I just don't think that would hold, you know, a Casey's or a, uh, some type of company coming, coming in there and putting a, a convenience location there for people driving in. I mean, it's a prime location with truckers and, and everything else because, you know, it gives them a place to stop before they have to go into Cedar Rapids. You know, come in early the night before. They can sleep and then go in in the mornings. They don't have to drive straight through. Um, I just, you know, I just would hate for us to lose out on an opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
And that's my fear.
On the other hand, I'd hate to see us put in infrastructure and then see it not be used. I've seen that in other communities where there's streets. They put in, there's water and sewer and it just sat there and never went anyplace after that. I don't know the, it's a different situation at a different time, of course. But, uh, yeah, I think we wanna keep our ear to the ground on what's going on. And certainly, if somebody wants to move in on our interchange, we should consider being able to move quickly. And that would be something our engineering would have to tell us, you know, what's it gonna cost to get a water and sewer?
And it might just be a matter of a conversation, too.
Yeah.
And that's why we were setting the boundaries, so there'll be a line draw where Lisbon will have this area, Mount Vernon will have that area. And I think we can all come to an agreement.
Yeah.
And we can do a, a document.
Yeah, we had an agreement before, just never went that far. We were taking off a five-year plan.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, it's quite obvious that Mount Vernon must plan on annexing itself to town. That's where they go.
They have no, they have no plans right now to annex out the town.
They may not have any plans, but why would a developer buy all that land to develop? I mean, come on, we're not that dumb.
One developer bought it all.
Right, was it Rocky or, we got Scobie one over here and this one over here is, he's, he's a...
It's west of town, you mean?
West of town.
They're...
No, I'm talking about south of town. Isn't that south?
Yeah. By the interchange. Or by the interchange. I never heard anything selling out there.
Okay. Anyway, discussion and possible action to reopen downtown rehabilitation grant.
Um, we did not have anybody, um, apply this year for the downtown rehab grant, so we still have the funds available. There are a few people that are interested that just, um, didn't have a plan together at the time that we allowed. So the, the committee has asked me to ask you guys if you would consider opening it up again, but put the stipulation in that they would still have to do the work and, um, have it done and reimbursed in this fiscal year.
How much money is, sir?
$20,000. And it's the matching grant where if they spend $10,000, we reimburse them for $5,000. And then inside, I think, is...
Well, I think that we should dump that $20,000 into our own fund to work on that downtown area. That's deplorable in places.
We're, we're kinda...
Those sidewalks, we're lucky that nobody has fallen and got hurt.
This, this money is from TIF that we've certified that debt, so it would have to be used for that.
Now, this is $20,000 in addition to the B Lisbon, $5,000?
B Lisbon, yeah. But we did not use the full $20,000 last year either. I mean, I think we used 11 or 12.
I'd, I'd like to see us continue that program, whether it's at $20,000 or 10 or 15. Doesn't seem like we're likely to use the whole 20, but if we got it in the budget, it'd be there as incentive.
Since we have the, we're in the nomination for the historic preservation downtown, they, they wanna encourage some of those business owners to try to steer some of their renovations back to the natural, I mean, the, the look that it was years ago. Especially places like, um, budget lines and, and those.
Yeah.
Is there any money, um, when you apply for that grant, is there a matching one for the items under A? When you apply for that grant?
You have to, you have to, if you spend $10,000, the city will reimburse you $5,000.
No, 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 no. We're gonna apply for a grant on historical preservation to proceed with applying for a grant to perform evaluation on Barnes, nature park, history...
This, this is just to hire somebody to do an evaluation.
Do we have any matching on that? Where you get a grant for X amount, we have to come up with X amount?
She doesn't, she hasn't applied for the grant yet.
Yeah, we do?
No, I don't think we have to.
Okay. I was gonna say, because that would be a good place to put it. And I would think that would be, uh...
Was that a motion, John?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the program.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, one more thing to ask about that. Uh, nevermind. Uh, public hearing ordinance resolution. Uh, to set the bid date on a public hearing on Gillette Lane Trail Project.
So we're setting the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. For...
The trail, Gillette Lane.
Gillette Lane Trail. Yeah, but what, eight?
Uh, September 9th.
That makes the next available date, if that's what we're gonna do.
So I'll move to set the public hearing for September 9th.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 New business.
Is that a roll call?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
You what?
This should be a roll call.
What's it?
Yeah, for 6A, you should do a roll call.
Who was the second? I'm sorry, I missed it. Nate, thank you.
Okay, so we want a roll call. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, new business.
Doug, we need, that was a public hearing. We need to set a bid date also.
If we were to put those help for bids, uh, help plans out this week and maybe contract or something by the, uh, probably the program will be September 19th, um, try to receive bids and then September 23rd, council meeting award, compressing it to these projects, one, two, but, uh, the doctors have enough time.
I guess I'll ask you, is this the one that that young man was here the other day with that? And we told him to come back? Start his office?
About eight weeks ago, I think that happened.
Was that the other day?
Oh, yeah, Eric, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
So that he's going to come and back? Is that what this is gonna be?
Dates here.
Okay.
He works in our office.
Okay.
He was here because I wasn't before, was that last time?
So we're setting the bid date for the 19th and then we can open everything up on 23rd?
Well, you'd open them on the 19th.
Mm-hmm.
And council would approve it on the 23rd?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so moved with those dates. Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, now we can go to new business.
I do not have any new business at this time.
Correspondence?
I did, I did give you guys an update. Um, there was some concerns regarding the bypass, um, road on Adams Avenue, the new one that comes onto Highway 30. Um, there were concerns also about the speed limit, the curve, and some signage. So, um, I received an email from Lynn County and the DOT. They included me in all the emails. And they're going to make some changes out there because they did find that, uh, the speed limit was not, was higher than it should have been, and they needed additional marking to let people aware that the curb is coming and the stop sign is coming. So you should have a copy of all the emails that you can review so you can see what's, if, in case you have questions from the public, that you'll have that. And I think that was it.
And do we decide which signs are gonna be?
Not out there.
Sign to see limits.
No, I know, but I mean, like, say, um, when you're coming into Cedar Rapids and they turn and go towards Mount Vernon. We don't get to put one that says Lisbon there?
On the bypass? Yes, there, there will be.
So that'll be there, okay. And when Mount Vernon, it'll be the same thing. It'll be Mount Vernon, Lisbon.
They'll have signs at the exit, yeah. That'll be taken care of with the project of the DOT, not us, because that's outside the city limits.
And do you remember that, I'm sure you do, um, that we are gonna move the sign out there? there that says Lisbon, that we have out at, at that end of town?
At Kelly Construction?
Yeah.
That was part of the deal, I thought. Do you remember, Travis?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah. So, we need.
At some point in time, that's what we had planned was.
We were going to do it, or DOT was going to do it.
No.
We were going to.
We would have to do that one.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to be thinking about that. Okay, any other, okay, engineer report.
Let's say for the most part, the sidewalk on Gillette Lane was pretty much the one thing.
Right, I'm sorry.
The trail on Gillette Lane is the one project we have going on currently. I am looking at a issue on Market Street with Travis, where the color on the opposite side that they fixed before has also sort of got some problems. So, we'll take a look at that and come up with a fix for it, but otherwise, pretty slow and hard, and as far as projects this one.
Are we going to replace the trees out there on Gillette Lane? Some of them that are dead?
Most of them, I think we've already replaced one or.
Did you already place them?
Yeah, we got ones, we got a couple that are too close to light poles, but I didn't want to stunt them, moving them again.
No, no, I'm not saying moving them. I'm saying across the street.
Right.
Yeah, what?
The ones that we moved across the street.
Yeah.
And then we had a couple die.
Okay.
But with the move, I don't want to, I didn't want to move them again this year that are too close to light poles, I'm going to take the ones that are too close.
These are just the ones that are dead there?
That's, that's, I'm trying to explain, I'm going to replace the ones that were dead with the ones that are too close to the light poles.
Got it, okay.
Good plan.
We need to do something out there, maybe pull the trees up or something. I mean, you drive by there, and I cannot believe how many people notice those.
Those are dead trees?
They look like heck.
We didn't want to do them in the heat of the summer.
They what?
We didn't want to do them in the heat of the summer, so we're waiting for it to cool.
I understand that.
Speaking of bad trees, I had some people ask me about us not letting the school cut down the trees over there at the park or whatever, and about how awful that second one looks. Is there a plan?
The tree is kind of split, so it's going in two different directions. We are going to clean up the park, it's, we've did a walkthrough of all the trees and stuff, there's a lot of trimming that needs to be done there. So, we decided, Travis and I decided that as soon as it slows down, we get the pool closed and all that, the guys are probably going to take a whole week and just spend pretty much at the park doing all that trimming.
Because now there's just a lot of dead branches and stuff laying around by it, and I don't know if you've been out there like today.
Well, we were just there a couple weeks ago, two weeks ago.
I think those are getting piled up from other where in the park, I don't think they're, if they're on the bottom.
Yeah, I don't know where they're coming from, I'm just saying it does look trashy.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, but.
Is that tree dead? Or is it?
Those are all healthy trees, and they serve as a barrier between the park and Four L Manufacturing, and the tree, it was not the tree board's wish to take them down, so.
No, I understand that, but I'm, and they all look good to me, except for that second one.
It's, it's full of little shrub trees that have grown in there, and it's, it's been a catch-all for garbage that doesn't get picked up when the park should be cleaned. So, all the garbage kind of blows in those trees, so. But they're going to get, they're going to get to them.
Okay.
There are a lot in the middle, too, between Bunnyfield and the Boys Diamond, a lot of those trees need trimmed. There's a lot of shrub trees that have grown in between the trees that we've got to get to and get cleaned out.
I mean, of course, those are on everybody's radar, because they know that we're not letting them cut it down, so they're looking for reasons to have a problem there. But I did drive by, just because I wanted to see, and it does look bad.
It still doesn't give them the room to put, I mean, if that second tree being bad, even if we were to take that down, we would just replace it with another.
Yeah.
Because the other two trees on either side of it are.
Yeah, they, they both look real good.
Yep.
I don't really care about their banner, I don't really care where they put it, but I'm just asking, because I was asked.
Yeah, it's on the list.
Everybody else does.
They have a whole fence line right there that they could put a banner on if they want to.
Yeah, it's on the list to get cleaned up, when Drayton and Eric Reese, Travis and I did walk through that list, a lot of the things that we put down. And they are about, what, three-fourths the way done with the sidewalk on the Boys Diamond, so it looks good.
I was at the park yesterday, and where they play soccer and all that. That's very nice, really looks good. Real nice. Okay, now it gets to be Travis's turn.
Still working on the sidewalk, like Connie said, down there behind the concession stand for the boys. We finally got over to southern area and got one of our storm sewers replaced, and part of the street pulled back. We were going to start on the other half today, but the rain kind of slowed it down, so, once we get that done, then we'll get back down to the park and try to get that finished. And then, like Connie said, we got trees, and a whole laundry list of stuff to get done after that, so.
You know, Travis, you seem to have a real good team working out there. I mean, I always see those guys working. And the other day, oh, he's going to get upset about this, but Chris was painting lines out by Brothers Market. Do you know that he walked all the way to the shed?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did?
Yeah.